Just like to welcome everyone back after our long absence over the summer and sort of slow start September, but it's nice to have everyone back to be part of what's going on in there and in form and in assignment and so welcome everyone. If there are any, if anyone would like to make any comments, they can come to my microphone and speak to us on the comment. Seeing none, we'll move on to the chair report in a sense. For the good of the organization, that was my little welcome, was the good of the organization. I had nothing else to say, but that was important and heartfelt. So if you would like to look at the agenda for school committee goals and actions for 2018-19, that is on the first page after the agenda. And we won't be taking a vote on them tonight because like as I said in July, I believe, and maybe perhaps in July yet, that school committee members will have an opportunity to make comments on them either tonight or they can send them to Julia and we can consider them for an October for a final vote. I also just like to add though, that we will be adding three other goals, additional goals to this list, but they're specific to three groups, three committees. One is Strategic Planning has agreed that they would write a goal for what their, a goal for what they want to accomplish this year. The role of committee will do the same and Finance Committee will do that and we're going to do that at the October meeting. So, yes?
Are those going to be general subcommittee roles or are they going to be our goals or are they just going to be goals for those particular?
For those particular groups, yes. They will be undertaking them and responsible for them. Jim?
And I'm not planning on talking about another goal when I get to the section 10 that'd be beast.
Yes, Jeff?
So two comments. The first is, if you look at the first goal, implementing the educational program including the academy model, that's not actually our goal. We're not implementing it. Other people are implementing it. Our role is encouragement and oversight on that, not implementing. That's maybe true for all of these goals because we don't, can't ensure it's ready for occupancy. What we can do is we can-
Support.
Support and oversee the process. So we can't actually do any of these things. We can't guarantee any of them. All we can do is perform our role of support and oversee them.
Okay.
And the other warning I need to give is that over time, we used to have a lot of goals in our list and we decided that we were going to keep goals, fewer goals that could be measured somehow and measurements. So we have to be careful when we write a goal, how are we going to be able to measure it? And if you have a goal that is just the goal of a, the result of a particular committee, then you better share that wordage there that they are working on that issue. And it's not clear to me whether it's better to have that as a separate goal or just to have the goal as part of their description of what they're going to be doing for the year. Because it's not clear if the work of a subcommittee is going to make its way to the whole school committee for us to take action on. See, I think you have to be careful with that distinction. Although obviously these subcommittees have to have goals so they-
Right. Well, we'll make it clear in the writing that those, the goal is that particular group and your point, it should be a SMART goal so that it can be measured. Yeah?
I wasn't going to use the word SMART because I have to use that in teacher evaluations, but that's what I had in mind.
Jeff, would you like to sit down here tonight? Or just so I can use it or Dave through, Ford and Alice are not going to meet here. It's up to you.
Well, if it's my permanent seat, it's good and I like to get used to it.
Okay.
We don't have to yell because we have these things here, so.
All right. Any other comment from anyone? So you are invited to send other comments regarding those goals to Julia and they'll get to the executive, the officers, and they'll reformulate this for the October meeting. And you'll take it, we'll contact, I did talk to them, but I'll remind them, the strategic planning people enrollment for a goal to that we can include at least. Okay. Subcommittee assignments for 2018-19. Would you please look at what's on the table? The one that came in the second packet last weekend, I guess I got mine. But it's not complete, so this group is complete of the active subcommittees and task forces and liaisons that we have. And Carrie would like to just make a little comment about the committees, where she services her time to do that.
On the Finance Committee, I've been on it for most of the time, but not all of the years I've been on the Minuteman School Committee and I've chaired for the last few years. This however, will be my last year representing Concord on the Minuteman School Committee. Therefore, even the two other members are, Dave who has played many roles and I expect to continue to play a natural role in the committee, is the second member. And Jim, who very aidfully represents Belmont, is a great asset on the Finance Subcommittee, but the status of Belmont relative to its membership is uncertain. I'm really hoping that somebody else will step forward to join the Finance Subcommittee this year so that we have more continuity guaranteed going forward than others.
Is there anyone here, of school committee members, who would like to join that committee?
Don't all jump up and down. It's really quite pleasant.
If you like numbers.
If you like what?
Numbers. If you hate numbers, it's not really-
But you know, you don't, the-
I'm not-
Finance Subcommittee, you've got to be good with numbers, yes.
Yeah, I'm good with them, I just hate it.
But there is a place on a Finance Subcommittee for somebody who takes the broader view and can look at things in the way their fellow townspeople are going to look at the budget. What are the bigger questions that we have about accountability, flexibility relative to, you know, our budget relative to other schools, to their, to their home schools? And you don't have to be the PhD in finance, right, Jim?
Right.
Just ask me. And Carrie's also, as you heard her talking about continuity. So if you think it over, if you change your mind or whatever, would you please email Julia with a CC to me so that I know what you're, what you're doing? And if that means shifting another, from another committee-
It could also be somebody who steps in to observe what you're meaning, if he, towards the end of the year or face a little market into budget cycle or something like that, then they might otherwise, thinking that they could move next year.
All right. We need to take a vote on this. Our policy will say that although the chair appoints people, they, the list has to be confirmed by the school committee. So it's not written down here as a vote, but would someone please? Okay, I have the wording out. Well, I've got it here and I'm just saying so. I have this copy as well, from another year, to prove, the draft list of subcommittee assignments slash task forces and liaison 2018-19 as presented. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous? All opposed? Or none opposed? And if you have that, it's over and stowed out here.
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Now, we didn't have, never mind. Yes, I know it's unanimous, it's, but, yes.
It's still, yeah, okay. All right. Section, section 10B update. We got a little, little taste of text of section 10B of the regional agreement at the July meeting, a little bit of a taster that I want the discussion is. And I do have, I just wanted to distribute something that I wrote at the beginning of September to try and get a handle on this and then I'll explain more. What do you want to, Carrie? The first two paragraphs really state, the first paragraph is the, is the law of the, well, of the, how it's written in the agreement. And paragraph two is what we did at our July 17th meeting, 17th meeting, we'll be voting the affirmative to create an exception to the policy. And since then, there was a discussion at the officers' meeting and with Kevin and whatever to take some actions. Now, there's a, to try and again wrap our hands around this, Ed has met with personnel from the Department of Education, DESI, to find out, to get their opinion about what a new admissions policy would look like. And there's information that Ed can, will tell us about that. Jim, as a subcommittee, not subcommittee, but as we'll say, a task person of one was, he was representing the Finance Committee, was gave some material to Kevin about the average, the average cost for non-members and Members and what that might look like. We're, we're working on that as well. And then, it all, a lot of, then there are implications for what, as I said, what the admissions policy would look like. And Ed will, as I said, Ed will tell us about that. So you just want a quick look at this, what I wrote. It tells you some of the actions taken mainly at the officers' meeting and then some proposed actions by the Finance Committee and then proposed actions by the school committee which would take place in the, in the future. And in your packet, I think there is something, there's a piece that Jim, there's a timeline of what Jim wrote also. I think that's in here.
So basically, if I may-
Yeah, go ahead.
You'll see in your packet a note from Lisa Sandler, works with the Department of Ed. Basically, her initial response to me, she was here, we had a meeting about this, was that to accept non-resident students through a district-to-district intermunicipal agreement or MOU would be in conflict and therefore the department would not approve such a policy. She said the alternative would be that the school committee vote not to accept any non-resident students. And then I-
Oh, we couldn't differentiate, that's-
And I asked our attorneys to look at it and as our attorneys do, they wrote a lot more. And that's in there, it says privileged and confidential, that's from Nancy Campany from our attorney's group. So what we did back in, was it July?
Yes.
When the school committee voted to postpone the implementation of 10B, that means we are in compliance with what they were recommending. And we sort of kicked the can down the road there. But it appears from initial legal feedback that from the department and from our own attorneys, that that section of the regional agreement, which begins in accord with state regulations and all laws, suggests something that is not in accord with regulations.
That's lovely. Sorry.
I'm all done.
I have to tell.
I had that phone.
No, I did time perfectly.
So I just want to sort of step back a little bit and first, first of all, just sort of recognize that, that I'm very motivated by this topic and I think it really is an important topic as a matter of policy and long-term financial, financial consequences for the, for the entire, entire district, but especially the member towns. What, what Dave included in the mailing package was something that I drafted that sort of summarized the work that I had been doing this, this summer. And, and we did have, we did have, and, you know, my anticipation and, and thinking throughout this whole process is that this is, this is a key financial and policy topic that needs to be brought up to the full, to the full committee. It's going to take a couple of months, it's going to take meetings at the subcommittee level, it's going to take, you know, some, some exchange of some ideas. And there's, there's, there's a lot of work that should be done on it. When we had our officers' meeting, Ed did mention that he, he already had a meeting set up with, set up prime, DESI, DESI in contact. And so, and so he said, said it would be great to, to informally raise, raise the topic, but really, in my mind, I think that a formal position by the school committee has to come after, after, after a lot more work. And, and, and once we're clear on what, what we think we would like to do, then I think we should, we should then tackle what the, you know, what the regulatory and political, political stuff is. So, so while I'm, I'm grateful for the, for the extra information we had, I don't view that as the final word on the topic, but just took one more piece, piece there. So in, in that spirit, I would like to add to the school committee goal, keep in mind the guidelines that Jeff has just given us about making sure we put a goal in that we, that we can do and that we're, that can be measurable. And I grabbed something like, investigating and analyzing the financial, demographic, legal and political considerations regarding section 10B of the regional agreement, the ultimate goal will, will be a review by the full school committee of alternative policy options consistent with the intent of section 10, 10B. So I'd like for us to sort of think about that next, next month when we meet about the goals. And then separately, I would just like as much support as I can get from you, just for me to go out and sort of undo this, undo this work as, and bring it, bring it back to you. I'm not asking you to pre-commit to any recommended, recommendation that I might, that I might, might have come up with, but I'm just sort of asking you to sort of, you know, grant me the license to go out and find out what, what is, what is not possible.
Jeff?
Two comments, one comment, one question. The comment is, add to your goal a date by which this review should be complete. So then that'll be part of it, so we know we've achieved the goal, it's been done by that date. It doesn't matter what the date is, just as long as it has a date on it. And the second thing is, what at this point, I know that it's early, what at this point in your mind would be a happy resolution, if you could choose your resolution?
I mean, the broad resolution is that the nine, that the nine, that the nine towns are committed, I mean, that, that we would have a school that was filled to capacity and every student there was paying a fair cost, which is, which is either, either based on the assessment or based on, based on average, average cost. So, so whether, whether that's because, because our programs are so much in demand by the nine towns that are going to be members after 2020, that would be great. If it turns out that we need the nine towns plus Belmont and Watertown and the six, and the six and Techland towns to fill up, fill up the school, that's fine, just as long as they're paying, paying, paying their, paying their fair share. And the difference right now is about a million to a million, a million, a million and a half dollars per, per year, which comes out of the assessments of the member towns.
Anyone else? Carrie?
Just want to point out that the Finance Committee does not yet have a position on this, even though Jim is sort of, you know, moving it along. It is on our agenda, I don't think I'm turning on the microphone, it is on our agenda for October 30th, but then again, that would be after the October meeting of this committee.
Oh, we will take it up at the Finance Committee.
Yes, yes, it will be coming up in, in the, in the committee.
Any other questions or comments? Jim, do you have that goal in writing that we go through? Do you have that multi copies?
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry.
But we're just reading again. Could we would take a vote on this considering what you had as a goal for our-
So, so it would be investigating and analyzing the financial, demographic, legal and political considerations regarding section 10B of the regional agreement, the ultimate goal will be a review by the full school committee of alternative policy options consistent with the intent of section 10B by January 31st, 2019.
Put your hand up, Jeff. Do you think Tim really did that, in that timeframe?
Yes.
Any other question or comments? All right. So the goal would be, as Jim stated, it would be, it would be, it would add to be five school committee goals would become one of our, our school committee goals. And somebody operatives would be, Jim for one, and the people pay, or the action, the players would be, and the Finance Committee initially. And ultimately, I think Alice would get involved in it, perhaps the tail end of coming with a, with a new admissions policy, which-
And, yeah, I mean, I would see some preliminary re reporting before, before the due date and, and I would encourage each, each and every, every member to be as involved as you want.
Yeah, we would, and we would invite people to the Finance Committee meeting who would want to come and be, to contribute that way. You could always contribute in writing through Julia, but if you want to be part of an open discussion, you could come to the October 30th, we'll invite you to the October 30th Finance Committee. Okay. All in favor?
We're voting on this goal now.
To add that to a goal, not, to add it as a goal.
Yeah, there's no, no result.
Can we read it again?
Should we vote on, only vote on all the goals?
Right, can we do it in context of other goals?
Okay, over it. Well, all right, yeah, okay. Well, we've gone, we've reviewed the goals, but we wanted, but we want, we reviewed the goals and we discussed that, but this would be just to add it to the list of five and then we can review it again.
But I don't think we need to vote on it because it's just, I mean, I haven't voted on the goals yet.
So you're adding a draft goal again.
Right. I don't think you owe-
Okay, all right. Is there?
So why don't you send it out? You can add all added members to that list.
Someone really didn't like it, didn't speak up.
Right, without seeing it in broadly.
So we can see it in writing that, but that's a good idea.
Yes, and considering, considering in a broader context, I think, yes.
Okay.
The words sound good, but-
So why don't you send it to Julia and Julia will send that to a proper pathway, all right? And you'll add that, that date when it will be accomplished. All right, moving on to the school building, the school building committee report, Edward Cole.
In Ford's absence, we had a school building committee meeting Monday night, a week ago Monday night, where there were some significant votes taken that I wanted to inform the school committee as a whole. I had all these nice notes and I forgot them on my desk. And I'm not going back up there because the meeting will be over, but I'm moving very slow. Two votes really had to do with KBA and moving forward with the design of our photovoltaic overlay district and the additional design work that's required in order us, in order for us to understand more specifically what the costs of moving forward with an enhanced athletic field complex would be with the town of Lexington. KBA was open to negotiations in regards to their original estimates. And I should say, in regards to the athletic fields, we, we'll talk a little bit more about it in my item under campus development, but we did confirm with the MSBA and the Attorney General that we could move forward with those votes. And we'll talk more about them in a minute. But those were two, I think, significant milestones in this overall project. You may recall going, the photovoltaic overlay district was approved by the town of Lincoln at town meeting in 2010. Last year, Minuteman was included in the capital bond bill for 1.4 million to complete construction of the photovoltaic overlay district on what will be the new student parking lot area. Those bond funds have not yet been released, but anticipating they may be released, we need to have our designs further along so that we can discuss more specific costs and implementation of that photovoltaic overlay district next year. I think I cover all, that was the most significant things. We're on budget, we're on time, and Greg and C are here to give us a little bit of an overview of where we are on the construction, what the week ahead or two weeks ahead looks Any questions about those two items that I mentioned?
So we'll go through briefly the progress. This is through today, actually. This is usually Trip's job, so don't mind me. So we're going to walk through the, the building, kind of how it's being built. So we're going to start at the two ends of the building and we're going to work our way towards the center. So Area A, B, which is kind of the heavier shops, you can see September 10th, inside of the building, we have duck work going up, CMU walls are coming up, and they're starting to close in those spaces with all the rooms and all the mechanical and utility work. Outside on 17th, this is the exterior of the building in that area, you can see the main screen veneers up, windows have started to go in the past two weeks. So soon this will be getting closed in for the winter. Now on the other side of the building, down the south, the G area, which is all the way down on the south side of the campus, September 10th, we have stud work on the interior. And on the exterior, you can see, some, let's see, up here on the second floor, veneers started to go on to the second floor on the exterior of the building. Again, this is racing towards enclosure for winter. So getting these two buildings enclosed and heated temporarily for the winter so that work continuum is kind of the, you know, stream of work that it'll be going towards. Again, down in the area G, site work has been going on for some infiltration basins. This is where the rainwater goes and collects and is retained and then infiltrated back into the ground. So this, this big area of excavation here gets filled in by these fun little domes that-
What a swarm I got by.
Yeah, so, so there are fun domes that hold water and they just create voids underground to hold the water in. So you can see that it's a pretty significant portion of work here. These are, these are about this high, you know, individually, so they can store a lot of water.
And drain the water down.
They infiltrate water back in and then retain it, sometimes they do let water out. So moving towards the center of the building, September 10th, here in the courtyard, again, September 10th, enclosure, so the ABD is going on the building, roofing is generally done except for some small portions and tie into the walls. And we'll start to see these areas start to get enclosed with windows in the next month or so. Up onto the roof, again, 17th, so as you can see, the white is, is completed roof. These are where the large skylights will be. They're temped in for the winter and for safety so that they don't get damaged as part, you know- safety, so that they don't get damaged as part, you know, as the construction goes on around them. And then below, here on September 10th, this is the gym, so CMU walls are going up in the gym, and that'll facilitate more of that roof and exterior enclosure going on, so that when we get to heating season, we'll be able to heat the building and maintain temperatures for construction. Now, coming again towards the center, Area D, above the gym, so the ring that circles the gym on the upper level, this is September 10th, and here's today, the 25th, so you can see that metal stud is going in, overhead utilities are going in and being completed, sprinkler, electrical, fire protection, mechanical HVAC, all of those things are going on in almost every area of the building at this point. So back down into Area D, lower, this is, in the back there, is the mechanical room, main electrical rooms are kind of off in that area, and we're looking over what will be the cafeteria, kitchen, and serveri. So you can see, September 10th, the plumbing underground and some of the electrical underground has started, and today, you can see that the plumbing underground is backfilled, stubs are up, and electrical is coming in for the, what we call the high electrical for the underground, coming in and through that area. So that area will be the next one that will receive concrete slabs on grade and prepare for walls and the rest of the work that goes on in there. You can see that some of the exterior skin here is on, this will be the last area that gets enclosed, just because of the access issues, to get all of the larger pieces of equipment and switchgear and mechanicals in there, but that will be enclosed fairly quickly once the slab is down. Back into the cafeteria, here you can see that the formwork, the false formwork is up for the large assembly stair, so that is the bottom side of the stair, and they'll start, they've started framing out on top of that to pour that stair in concrete.
Is that metal?
It will be cast-in-place concrete.
But what's there now?
What's there now is plywood and wood, it's temporary, it's like shoring.
Skin on it or something?
Yeah, so it has a, it has a skin, so that the concrete is nicely pretty once it's taken off. Area D lower, on the 10th, this slab is now poured, this is one of the electrical rooms, and beyond it is the walkway, the gym is to our left here, and the theater is also to the left in front of us, and that, to the right is the open cafeteria. On the outside of the building, one of the big pushes to get weather tight is the theater, so if you can imagine the 70-foot tall tower of CMUs, takes a while to put up, so we're racing towards getting that enclosed and being able to waterproof and waterproof that. If you take a look here in 17th, this is the inside of the theater, so you can see that all the slabs are now poured inside the theater. Steel is all up, obviously, and so now, access to these upper floors and balconies are becoming accessible, you can now go in and kind of get a sense of what the theater will really look like once it's completed, and there might be a superintendent that's pretty excited about that. So it's a, it's a pretty exciting time in that area, we're pleased with the view angles and all the things that go into the design, once you get to see them in reality, you know, you don't, you don't really know you've got it right until it's built, so we're feeling very good about that area, and very happy with the progress that's taken there. And just that's showing off, so here's the main entry as it sits today, and you can see from the rendering, kind of, we're, we're pretty close to what we told you it was going to look like, which is always a good sign. So you'll start to see these finishes come on in the next couple months, windows go in, and buildings start to get closed. Now, into the entry hallway, so the pictures are approximate to construction site, so again, rendering of the skylights, and they're somewhat closed here because they're covered over, but once they're back opened up, you'll start to see this, this rendering come through in our, in the end of it. And then, again, just kind of showing off on what that front entry will be. So, so yeah.
Questions for anybody?
So currently with the...
Jeff?
Oh, sorry. He'll have you. So we were told that so far, we're on time and on budget, and if you were to step back for a second now and tell us what your biggest concerns are in maintaining on time and on budget, what would they be, and how concerned should we be about them at this time?
So, right now, we've come out of the ground in almost every area. The last thing to really have us deep excavations was the infiltration basin, we did hit some heat there, so that is somewhat a concern, it looks like most of it we can kind of reuse on site as topsoil, it's a pretty good material. So that's one of the things that is concerned, not necessarily schedule-wise, budget-wise, it does have an impact, but I think it's within, well within our, our controls of what we have for contingencies and then planning for these kind of unknowns. So that's, you know, when we worry about things in construction, underground is where we tend to have the most unknowns, so we're, we're beyond that point, so that makes us pretty happy. In terms of challenges, things always arise and challenges, and, you know, it's a public procurement environment, the subsetting, if you're familiar with that, that always has some issues to it in terms of scope and things like that, but right now, we're pretty confident that we have a good control of the budget and the schedule.
And I recall, just recalling the previous time I asked that question, one of the bigger concern was, could you get enough workers, skilled workers, to work on the job with all the things going on? Has that been resolved at all, or is that still a major concern at this time? That especially was.
We have, what, about 170 right now?
Yeah, so, again, I'm the great picture guy and not the mandatory workforce guy, but the current staffing, or workers on site, the man counts have been 150 to 170 on a pretty standard day. Those do fluctuate up and down depending on who's on site, for example, today it was pouring out, we're doing a lot of exterior veneer, the man counts today dropped because the exterior veneer can't go up, so the mason has almost 45, 45 masons on site today. So, yeah, so there are a lot of workers on this job, it is a large footprint, so sometimes when you walk around the building, you don't, you only see maybe 20 people, but, you know, 160 to 170 workers on site every day is a, is a pretty good workforce.
So you're happy with that, and my final follow-up is, how can you get 45 masons to work on a job, but I need even just one, I can never seem to get them in.
Dave, and then Carrie?
So, again, with, with weather conditions fluctuating, we had some pretty torrential rains and, and water issues flooding in some of the areas of the state. Was the worksite impacted, and what do you guys, or how have you guys been faring with the weather conditions?
I would say the weather has been standard for the time of year and the location. There have been some heavy rain events, luckily, we haven't really had any large impacts, things that would affect project budget or schedule. Of note, it does affect, you know, how much masonry you can do in a day outside, so things like that, that have, you know, day impact, not overall schedule impact, so schedules are professionals.
Plus then, plus then, you know, we, we plan for it, you know, we're making sure that we're not doing material until we have the roof cover up, and then, and also towards the windows, so we manage that, and, you know, Gilbane has been doing a good job on it, so we tighten, you know, looking at temporary roof drains, covering the fence, you know. Sometimes we miss, but then we come back, and after raining, you see where the leaks are wiggled back, and you seal it, so we've been managing.
My question, in answer to questions at earlier meetings, I think all of the major materials were under contract, so the prices were locked in. How about the availability and delivery of materials, are there anything there that would be critical in sense of, of time and...
Not that would raise to a level of concern that we can't deal with.
Same as weather, then?
Yeah, I, I think that inevitably, there's always something that comes up that has a longer lead time, or a delivery schedule is missed by a couple days, and we work as a team to kind of flush those things out, move things around to make sure they don't impact the overall schedule, and so that, that is a daily life of construction administration.
I'm familiar with one building that has white frames on the windows that were supposed to be creamed, but by the time they got delivered, we did not have time to change them. We've got money off that.
Yeah, the, yeah, windows are always a schedule driver, doors, door frames are always a schedule driver, so yes, we have the same challenges that every other project has, we just like to think we're better at dealing with.
We'll find out.
We'll find out, we'll find out.
Thank you very much.
Always builds and all that.
Question, yes?
What percent complete are you?
So by the, we project out to the end of the month, so by the end of this month, we will be approximately 40% complete. Obviously, we haven't received the requisitions for this month yet, so that's a projection on, on the OPM and the architect's stance, but about 40%.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you also. Okay, moving on to the Supervisory Report, Edward Cole, Staffing, okay, you can mention that Bruce Flood too.
Well, as you may know, we had, we lost a teacher 10 days ago. Bruce Flood, our automotive teacher, had been here for 20 years, he'd been struggling for the last few years, and we lost him just before school began. And we've been very in touch with his family. Most of the school went to his services, and we just want to have a moment of silence for him, memory and gratitude for his service here at Minuteman for over 20 years. Thank you.
Can I just add one thing?
Go ahead.
I just want to add that I was able to go to the calling hours, what impressed me at the calling hour, I didn't know Bruce, I didn't know anything about him, but the number of his relatives who were there, his nephews and nieces were there, like along with his brothers, brothers, his in-laws, and they've all spoke so highly of him, and they were, and according to people that I met, I met former teachers, I met present teachers, Ernie Hoo was there, Mary Ann Hamm, both of them talked about what a wonderful man he was personally was, in addition to teachers, in addition to being a wonderful teacher, and I was impressed by the number of former students who were there, some, you know, well into their careers, as well as present students, so I'm glad I went, like, to find out that this, he was a person to, to be remembered and to be valued, and we value anyone's life, but to how he was valued by the Minuteman Committee as well, community as well as his family, really, I thought was really, said a lot about him as a person and a teacher.
So in your packet, there's a staffing update, regards to some retirements and folks that were transferred internally. We only had two or three folks that moved on to other schools. If you met Jackie, she is now working for an insurance company.
Yeah.
So we're happy for her. I don't know if there are any questions I can answer them, if not, the campus development...
Just one quick question, Jeff?
Yes, sir.
Is this a typical or unusual amount of staff change per year?
Well, if you're talking about turnover, this is very, very low, and it's not unusual. Yeah. Well, I believe in putting people in the position they are best suited for, so you'll see some internal transfers there, when jobs became available, we had folks inside that wanted to address those needs, we provided for that.
Carrie?
I was curious about Anna Maria, did she, does this mean that she went to another tech?
Yeah, yeah.
Close to her home, perhaps, or? I was curious about that, because she's made some significant progress in her career she was here.
Yeah, so she's at a bigger school.
Facing big challenges too.
Yeah.
Anyone else, okay, Ed?
Campus development update.
There will be a vote, Ed will talk about that, but on your, on the table, you'll see item, Agenda Item 5B, so we will be taking a vote on that.
So just to remind you, we included in the packet the overview of what the UMass Donahue Institute is doing with us, to help us in the procurement and the development of public and private partnerships. That's right, we haven't met since the governor officially signed, the governor did officially sign our bill, House Bill 4503, and we received a nice parchment with his signature on it, and you recall that bill, that legislation, which we've worked on for years, allows the district to enter into long-term brown leases with partners that are compatible with our mission and desirous of being on the campus together. So the UMass Donahue Institute is going to help us with the process of developing a request for letters of interest from potential partners, and then they'll move forward with a process where we look at the needs of the partners, long story short, and see if there are some development and development opportunities that would meet the needs of all the partners on this end of campus. We're also asking, we'll be asking proposals to identify revenue streams for the district, and how things would be managed, depending what resources are here. So in addition to that process, we, as we talked about for the last six months or so, we started to discuss with the town of Lexington, their interest in providing more robust athletic facilities beyond what we were providing for in our MSBA project, and that's what I want to review with you, where we're at with that process. And you'll see on, in your packet, there's a, an overview of athletic complex dated July 31st, 2018, and then there are two renderings beyond that. One is full build, and the second one is alternate one. And just a reminder, the alternate one was what we provided for in our MSBA package that was approved by MSBA, should funds become available for us. The full build would, although it looks, if you have to look closely, but the, there is a big difference, about $9 million in alternate one versus full build. And what we get with a full build are synthetic fields, all the fields would be synthetic fields, therefore, they would have the ability to support more hours of activity on them. We get tennis courts, also structures that are involved with stadia, bleachers, press box, athletic fields, kitchens, bathrooms, lockers, it really becomes a, sort of a destination athletic facility. And this is what we've talked about with KBA, Skanska, and Gilbane, and we had some initial cost projections that we've shared with the town of Lexington in executive session meetings as well as public meetings now. So in recent history, you know, Carl Valente retired, we have an incoming town manager, we've met with the interim town manager, as well as leadership from various committees in the town of Lexington, most notably the Recreation Committee, and the Director of Recreation for the town of Lexington, Melissa Batiz, and she has developed a working group within the town of Lexington to look at how Lexington and Minuteman could move forward with this idea. Kevin met with them this past, was it a phone meeting Monday or so?
Yes.
And they kind of outlined what they would like to hear from us in regards to where we are, and when I say us, I mean... And when I say us, I mean the district, the school committee. And one of the things they asked us to do, which references the vote I'm asking the school committee to consider, when we looked back in our records, the only public vote we have ever taken as a school committee was to authorize the superintendent to explore potential partnerships. And that was like three or four years ago. Other than that, there's been no public declaration of intent by the school committee. We've had some executive session discussions, but within those executive sessions, we've had no corresponding votes, nor have we voted to release those executive session minutes yet. So that brings us to what's at your table now, which is a simple, you see it's Agenda Item 5B, a proposed vote, which really just states the school committee's consideration of a partnership, not an actual partnership, to augment the expansion of the fields that belong to us and to further authorize me to develop an MOU or some other similar document to bring back for consideration by the district. Some members of some of the committees in the town of Lexington felt this was an important declaration to have on record.
Discussion. Jim, then, I saw Jeff and Dave.
A couple of questions or comments. What has been the role of the, or involvement of the Lexington School Committee in this, either in the working group or other things?
Well, Dave and I met with the Lexington representatives of the Lexington School Committee back in the spring, and I think this topic came up then. They had been part of the working group?
It was a general discussion.
Okay, so we aren't running the risk of going down the road and finding that the school committee has, feels like they haven't.
No, they've been involved. Kevin?
This, to answer your question a little more broadly, this has already been discussed in public sessions of the Recreation Commission, the Capital Appropriations Committee, and the Appropriations Committee. It's scheduled for the school committee agenda on October 9, and scheduled for the Board of Selectmen on October 15.
I just come from a town where sometimes the school committee and the rec group don't have the exact same view. What's that with that?
And also...
Bedford. I mean, oh!
I called Belmont Bedford, and I know where you're meeting.
It is part of the working group that Ms. Baptiste formed. At the last meeting, there was the Lexington School Superintendent, two members of the school committee, and one member of the Board of Selectmen.
And has Ford and the Building Committee been involved in these conversations as well?
Yes, well, we discussed it quite a bit on Monday when they voted, the school Building Committee voted to authorize additional funds to deepen the design work that's associated with these lands.
Just thinking off the top of my head, I'm just wondering whether we want to wait for Ford, Ford to have a chance to comment, but I'll just toss it out there. I'm not sure how I feel about that.
Jeff and Dave?
I have a number of questions on this. The first one is, just in order of my confusion, what's the relationship with this possible public-private partnership with Lexington and the fields with the larger issue of the campus development that's also being worked on? Are they two separate projects?
That's a good question.
Possibly the same project or?
At this point, well, let me just, as this has evolved, when I say this, the whole idea of campus development, we had some discussions with UMass Donahue Institute. We did our due diligence and talked to some people who had expressed an interest in being part of a campus development project. And it became clear to me, well, I don't think clear is the right word, my sense was that around the athletic fields, it made more, the town of Lexington was more of a compatible natural partner than some of the other folks that were asking to be considered when we were considering, more so because the needs around the facilities are very similar versus, so just imagine, you know, they were private groups that were funded privately for profit that had very different ideas about what they wanted to do on an athletic field in a high school. And once we, I just wasn't, it just didn't feel right. So we had talked to Lexington five years ago about the possibilities. And then, so I approached Carl again. I said, you know, should we talk about our mutual interests again? And the more we did that, the more it seemed to make sense for us to pursue that before going into the whole campus development and just lumping this in that. I felt like the danger of putting our athletic fields into that big campus development pot would be that our students and our programs and our nine-member towns and our partners that we've had for years would be at greater risk, in other words, of not being able to utilize this resource. So I made it clear in my discussions with Lexington from the beginning that whatever time they get on these fields is after every Minuteman need is fulfilled, after every member town athletic need is filled, after our partners' needs are filled, and then whatever hours are left over would be available to Lexington. And when you look at the kinds of fields we're going to build, the number of hours that are available are two times, maybe three times as much as our alternate one that we're going to build with the MSBA money. Those are natural fields that have a lot more limited use on them. So is that all?
Well, but do you see the, if we do this partnership with Lexington, do you see that as the entire campus development?
Absolutely not.
So there is two possible projects. If you're taking, instead of saying, let's lump it under one giant project, which might be with a third party, you now envision as one feasible road forward to do the fields and athletics with Lexington and allow others in for an additional project on the campus, which is a little less well-defined.
It'll be more focused, it'll be more, I think, easier to manage because of the limitations of acreage we have left. We won't be getting partners that are too big for us. We'll be getting partners that are much more equal to us. And the other thing...
Do you have a vision of who these partners might be or what sort of projects there are?
Well, there's lots of people that have been, you know, Middlesex Community College, UMass, School of Engineering. I just had a call this week from a company, a veterinarian, they have like fifteen veterinarian offices, and they're looking to add more veterinarian training programs in the Northeast. Asked if we were interested. Who else? Oh, people who want to put a pool in, in the Lexington area, people that want to have wellness and health facilities associated with supporting people who might live in assisted living places.
So there are a number of opportunities you have in the back of your mind for the second half of the project?
Yes.
Okay, so here's my only concern moving forward with this. Again, I'm very happy with the way that this is evolving, but I feel that since this is such a major use of the property, I want to make sure that the other member towns are being brought up to date in how we're going about this. So I'm wondering, what kind of communication has there been with the other member towns to keep them up to date? And would now be a good time to call, to allow all the representatives from the member towns, you know, the Selectmen, the Finca, whatever, to come here and listen to what you just said to us at this point. So they won't later say, we felt that this was, you know, part of our property, and you're going a little bit, even though you're the owners of the property, you're going a little further along the path than we thought you should go without checking back with us formally.
Yeah, we, I, the new town manager for the city of Lexington comes on board...
October 1st.
October 1st, yeah. You know what I mean.
I know what you mean.
Bedford. Yeah, the other thing I want to say though, before I forget, is that this is, the burden of this happening is on Lexington, not on Minuteman. If this doesn't happen at their town meeting, once all this goes through all the process, the end game here is to get approval from town meeting in Lexington in March to fund their share of this. If that doesn't happen, boom, this all goes into that big project. So the onus is not on us, the onus is on Lexington. And they know that, and there are, they are, there's a sense of urgency. And we've been asked the same thing that you just asked me from the stakeholders in Lexington. What have you talked to your member towns about? Because we don't want to go to an MMA meeting and, you know, da-da-da-da-da. So we're hoping in October to be able to have at least a town managers' meeting and invite interested selectmen, like we've done every year.
So we voted on this, you're basically saying that in October, we will have a formal meeting with stakeholders in the, all member towns to bring them up to date on this. Because if you say that, then I feel comfortable voting on this.
That's been our intent, yes.
And that'll be this October?
Next month, yeah.
Which is...
Should be on calendars now.
Yeah. Okay, so now I feel comfortable voting on this, but I really feel the urgency to bring them up to date with where we're going on this, because I don't want them to start to come up with a reason why it's not a good idea, why they're against it, or even to feel that because we, they feel locked out of the process even though they're not, because I've been talking to my people about it, that brings resentment to moving forward on the project. I want to avoid that and make sure that...
Yeah, most every, yeah, and you know, there's a lot, what we have, my, the representation here at this table has been on the school building committee too. And so there's a lot of people in town, in the towns, especially in, well, not especially, but in the towns that know what's going on around this. How they've communicated that, I don't know.
That's unconcerned to us. I want to make sure that it is, now that we're going public with it, we're talking about it publicly, I want to make sure that they're brought up to date, so we don't hear back from them angrily that we weren't brought up to date, since we're talking about really starting to make some decisions in the March timeframe, which is awfully close.
Sue?
Okay, I'm sorry. So my only concern is that with the larger project, the opportunities to have multiple proposals and competing bids and competing opportunities have not been considered at this point. This proposal and this vote may actually limit the amount of opportunities that are brought forth to us that we have yet to consider, because we don't know what they are. So I think it's premature, I mean, I think it's fine to continue to have discussions, but Lexington should be part of the, one of many who are interested in entertaining proposals. And we can look at all of the proposals at the same time. So we can put them on notice that we are expecting to put a request for bid or proposal for a specific timeframe, and if they want to prepare and pitch it, that's great. But I think if we go this route, we're limiting the potential opportunities. And I understand that, you know, we are going to have, you know, the fields the way we projected them, but again, I think that that is leverage for potentially other opportunities to...
Let me respond to that, because that's not the case.
You have to respond, then you can talk to everyone, all right?
Feel some different complaints.
No, mine is not a complaint.
I didn't mean to say that.
What I was going to say is that, I read this, and I had sort of a similar reaction, but what we're doing here, what I'm concerned about is, all this really does is say, it's okay for him to go and get, you know, a fleshed-out proposal that comes back to, for consideration by the district. So we're not rubber stamping whatever he does. But we would, I think, be giving Lexington officials and people that we're dealing with the understanding that it has our support. And I'm like, I have similar concerns.
So I think the wording is too restrictive or favored towards Lexington rather than a broad supportive statement for proposals that are similar to this by maybe other member towns or...
It seems to me, it's a potential match that sort of makes sense for our needs and for Lexington's, and it's not, you know, it's not something that comes as a surprise to me by any means. But how it will be read by our member communities balanced against a six-month timeframe is difficult. So I understand the position you're in as well in trying to get something done.
Well, let me explain a few more realities, that we don't have the opportunity to consider a lot of alternatives. We submitted the alternatives six years ago when we submitted them to MSBA, and that's what MSBA has approved. So that base bid of alternate one, that's what we are building. So whatever comes, and so that can't change. And when you look at that plan, there really isn't anything, you know, significantly beyond that that could be approved by the town of Lexington Conservation Commission that could be added to the plan. I think where you have the ability to look at opportunities is that this doesn't go anywhere, or in the town of Lexington, and then it does become part of a larger campus development project, from my point of view, and from the construction project schedule point of view, this building has to come down and this base bid has to be built. So, and everything's publicly bid. There's no, you know, the procurement process is the same as we go through for everything. So we're not at a disadvantage there at all. We're actually at an advantage because we've been approved by MSBA and the Attorney General to kind of integrate this MSBA-funded component of the project with additional funding that's not from the district, which is a very unique, I think it's unique for us. I know they've done it in a few other projects. But the projects were such that the project had ended and was closed out, and then something else was built upon it. We don't have that kind of a timeframe.
This is a dedicated footprint, in other words.
That's been approved by the MSBA.
One way of saying it.
So we're committed to all of it.
Right. I guess my challenge is stating a favored alliance without knowing if there are other opportunities out there that we'd want to do.
Well, we'll know when we go to the bid process.
Understand, but if we make this vote, we are showing support for a specific vendor?
No, partner.
Partner?
Yeah.
But again, there are potentially other partners that may not bid if they see that there's already a preferred partner. So I think, again, keeping it generalized and open to anyone who wants to participate based on the criteria gives us a broader spectrum.
And what we're hearing Lexington ask for is a declaration that the school committee's interested in exploring the possibilities with Lexington now.
Jennifer, Jennifer, Jim, and then Jeff. You're after, who are you supposed to be after?
Sue.
Okay, all right.
Just go down the road.
All right. Yeah, right, just go right down the road. It's serious.
So I have sort of a basic question, the difference between alternate one and the full build, that's the nine-million-dollar difference.
That's estimated.
Yes. Lexington is, wants to support the full build, and they're going to contribute how much to that?
The total build is almost sixteen million. The total build is almost sixteen million, that's why we have to do the, we're providing about eight million dollars of value and we're asking for eight million from Lexington.
And Lexington is expressing willingness to contribute that amount of money to use this after everybody else is happy. And that would be...
At this point, yeah.
At this point. So that means, I'm, I'm trying to figure out what their expectation is.
They're going to get additional time that they need.
Weekends, I'm assuming?
When we're not using it.
See, I don't, I don't understand what that means, so if you...
When we're not on it, it's available. When I say we, like I said earlier, our partners, our athletic fields, the people who have rented from us for many, many years that expect to be renting from us going forward if they can afford our new rates. After all those people have been serviced, and any additional groups from our nine-member towns that want access to it, then the Town of Lexington Recreation Committee, or whatever they call themselves, would have hours available.
So for example, if Arlington decides that they want to use the tennis courts during the season for five hours a day, Arlington isn't, would it be Arlington Minuteman students or Arlington as a, Arlington, high school students?
We have to see what their proposal was, but, for instance, Fidelity House is from Arlington.
Yes.
They're one of our partners, they come here for summer school every year.
Right.
If they're, if we're going to continue to serve them, then they would have priority over the Town of Lexington.
So there's a...
That exists now in our tiered rental facilities policies and procedures.
I understand, I'm basically just trying to figure out what Lexington thinks they're getting.
Probably what, between fifteen hundred to two thousand hours.
Okay.
A year. When you look at the time we're not on it, and if they're, if they're all lit fields and all synthetic fields, and that's a significant amount of time.
Okay, thank you.
They have no space.
Okay, so question, if the facility is rented, or say, I don't know, in turn, does Minuteman get the proceeds or do we split up the Lexington?
Depend, we don't know what the business model is, that's what U S Donahue Institute's helping us with.
All right, so that was my question. My comment is, I understand where Dave's coming from, but I think having a public or a private entity involved in public school facilities is a disaster waiting to happen. I think you are right, you're right, you need to have much more control over the facility than you would if you were taking it all to the private organization. Especially a for-profit private organization. And I would feel, and, you know, Lancaster is unlikely going to use these facilities, we're just too far away. But the students here from Lancaster are going to use these facilities, and I would feel much more comfortable in an agreement with a member town than with a private organization and a for-profit private organization.
I'm, I'm still bad trying to make sure I understand how this fits into the larger campus development. And from what I, I just want to make sure I have right understanding. So from what I understand you're saying, but moving ahead with this does not preclude another decision at some point if, for example, we decided that what would be in the best interest of Minuteman would be to have a fantastic pool facility here and, and that that would be in the best interests of the students who move forward with campus development. That if we move forward with the full build here, it wouldn't preclude those other decisions, is that what you're saying? Okay. And U S Donahue Institute would be, is involved at all steps because in reading this, they do mention the athletic fields. As part of what they're doing for us. But it's broader than that.
Yes.
Jim?
So I'm going to propose some amendment, and if you think it's a bad idea, we can, that can fail for lack of a second. But the amendment would be to just put a period after Minuteman Regional Vocation School District can strike the second clause and, and further authorize superintendent to develop an memorandum of understanding or similar, similar document. I'd be proposing this because I do think it's, it's good to give Lexington a sign that, that we do want to encourage this, this own conversation. And I think we can add the authorization for the superintendent to develop a memo of understanding next month or after, after we have the district-wide meeting. And, and I don't think that'll sidetrack the timeline table for, if it's all positive to hit the March Lexington Town Meeting. So that's my amendment.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second it because I might, I want to get that sort of in. All right, I second.
All right.
It seems to me that getting the memorandum of understanding would help us understand exactly what Lexington is expecting on this. So I think there might be an advantage to that.
We're discussing, and then any, any comment or question, Dave?
I, I think the amendment should be, should be broad, not specific electively. It should be opened up to any, any proposed candidates. I think the, the problem that I have is not with Lexington. It may be the best opportunity. I think we're channeling and we're, we're isolating to a specific group. And we should be opening it up to anyone. And if Lexington is the only ones that even step up, perfectly fine. But I think if we pander or, or we give support to a specific isolated group, we're limiting ourselves. And I, I just want to keep it open. Give us the best opportunity. So I, 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 I would not vote for the amendment the way it is, but if it was reworded in such a way to allow for a broader audience, I would accept that.
Okay, Jennifer?
So, yeah, if we struck with the Town of Lexington and just kept it as consideration of a partnership to augment the expansion of the athletic field, would Lexington feel that wasn't adequate?
Probably not.
No.
So I will make that a move, to have that amendment, just to strike.
We have to deal with this amendment before we can make another amendment, so there could be an argument against this amendment.
Kevin has something you want to add?
I just want to mention that the timeline that Town of Lexington has in order to work this through their committees and get it on, on the warrant is very tight. And if we were to go out and solicit proposals on this type of project, I'm not sure that once we solicit, receive, evaluate, come back before the school committee, I think that the, the March town meeting would not be, would not be realistically met.
Any other questions, Jeff?
So here's my understanding. In the Town of Lexington to move forward on a very expensive item like this, that can be a politically difficult thing to do, and this is actually giving them the, the ammunition they need to confidently move forward. See, the Minuteman people really are interested in exploring a partnership, that's the purpose of this. So the people who may be in the political side that may be wavering and don't want to look like fools because we're not really interested. This tells them that we are interested, that's, to me, it seems, reading between the lines, that that's the main point of doing this at this time. The other part is that we have a, a tiny concern in which we have to make a decision on these fields, is that correct? That after a certain point, we must commit to one or the other?
Yes.
So, so in other words, our timeframe may not be enough to do the larger exploration of all the possible partners, is what I'm saying. So I'm saying that since we're committed to doing something with the fields and we have to make a decision in a limited timeframe, maybe rather than we're disappointed at not trying every partner, rather we should be saying, oh, goodie, there is somebody who can actually help us out in the timeframe we have remaining. Is that sensible, or am I missing something there?
That's how we've been operating with Lexington.
So if Lexington, if we do not end up in that timeframe with Lexington, then is it possible we would lose the opportunity to do the, the build-out because we missed the deadline in which we had to make a decision to do it or not?
The costs of doing the build-out would be much greater than what we've anticipated because the timing would be off.
Okay, so those would be the reasons for giving heavier weight to Lexington even though we may not like it. And the thing, the kicker for me is the separate idea, because I was thinking that the athletic fields and the build-out, that that was going to be the main, the only big campus project, and I'm hearing that that's not true at all. That the current thinking, how it's evolved, and I've watched this evolve over five years now, okay? Is that there's the field portion in which, yes, maybe we could do something more dramatic with somebody else, but circumstances seem to lead us towards the, this beneficial partnership which fits into the timeframe. And that's not the other opportunity, we could have another opportunity which we have had some interest in, which has nothing to do with the fields. Which we can go into that process of opening up to everybody. So we're kind of looking at some, you know, imperfect compromises here. So if you have like a, a, a two-year timeframe in which we didn't have to make a decision, then probably going out and doing more of what was suggested here is probably a good idea. But I suspect that we don't have the luxury of that much time, am I correct in that?
That's our understanding from Lexington.
From Lexington, and I'm not sure, and I just wanted to ask the team, is there a project schedule issue that we need to take into consideration here as well?
Yes.
Can you talk about that a bit?
So we need to decide in terms of where we're going with the full build, that affects the soil management and how, you know, where we move the grade, what we do with, you know, with soils on site and how, how K G is going to design the fields. So that the fields versus natural prices is different, so that, I don't know, it's only Lexington.
Could you step up the microphone?
Sure.
I'm sorry, or you can go over here and use this one, whatever.
Sure.
There's a bunch of empty ones.
Yeah, thank you, I'm sorry.
So, I was saying...
Now you both, pull up.
Yeah.
Speak into the microphone.
So it's, it's also a...
It's, I turned it on.
Oh, thanks.
It ends too.
So, so it's, it's, it's a decision that we need to make based on, you know, what we do with, with the existing site, you know, after we done it. And, and it's often going to affect, we're always going to do the, K G is going to do the design, you know, lab, you know, now.
So at this point, we're at a point where in a year from today, this building will be under containment, will be abating this building. So one year out, this building is out of commission, it's being abated. A month from now, there'll be estimators here ripping it down. Something has to go in place with this building, and it can be what was in the base, which is basically field, which is basically just planted grass, and that, because of the Town of Lexington's conservation requirements, requires, like we saw, that stormwater management system requires another large stormwater management in place with this building. Going down the road to the alternate, which was the grass fields, that still requires that storm management system. Going a step further to the development of the synthetic fields, the way it's proposed here, eliminates the need for that stormwater management system and creates that stormwater management within the layers of the fields. So there are decisions that can't necessarily be undone, but tend to increase in cost the further down the road we go. The other item is, is the soil management, as you alluded to. Those things are like the peat we saw that came out of that infiltration basin. If we're planting all grass here, fantastic, we have a lot of peat we can use, we can put it on the ground, we'll get good grass. Might not be what the school really wants. So we're, we're at a point where we need to start making those decisions, or at least making design decisions that will, you know, flow down into the construction decisions. So that is, from a project point of view, the timeframe constraints that we have to deal with.
So there is some time pressure on us to enter into a partnership. And if the thing with Lexington does not work out, and it's going to depend on the agreement we come up with. We may not like the agreement we come up with, we may say no, and we'll go with the smaller fields, and such is life. But if there's an opportunity for us to come up with an agreement in the timeframe we have to make it affordable for us, basically remember, we would rather have those nice fields, everything else being equal. That's one of the sacrifices we made with this project, was to limit our athletic field ability. So this solves actually a major problem that we have too. So it does seem to me that there is a little bit of, we should be, in my view, a little flexible in what we state to get this process rolling. And the problem that does concern me, and I'll state it again, is the communication as quickly as possible. Just listen to all the questions here, you can have nine towns with the same questions, nine different, you know, boards of selectmen, and the whole shebang. We all want to have the same questions, and we have to start talking to them soon to bring them on board as well. But I'm in favor of voting on it as is for all the reasons that have been stated here, even though it's imperfect. An imperfect timeframe and choice we have going forward.
Anyone else with a comment or question? All right, I'm sorry, we don't take questions from, I sort of erred the first time, but it's not an open discussion, I'm sorry. If you were hearing, you can do that, excuse me. Yes, Sue?
I just wanted to understand what the memorandum of understanding would lock us into, if anything.
We won't know till we see it.
And only we vote on it, though, too.
Then you can decide to reject it or not, and when we have it.
All right, so it's still...
Yeah, I'm hoping that it has...
It's our prerogative.
We still need to vote on it.
It's our prerogative, school committee prerogative to vote on it.
Yeah.
Admitting to nothing except for likely for what it is.
Right, so what we get, if we vote on this, is clarity, much more clarity about...
What it is.
What would actually be possible moving forward. Okay, good, just wanted to...
Carrie?
Yeah, again, what I said before, the last phrase in the original motion is, for consideration by the district. The, the document that results from this process, we're not necessarily committing to approving it, we're supporting the concept with what may or may not, in its details, be acceptable to this committee. I also wanted to say, at least, town managers talk to each other. And I, I don't know if, you know, Carl talked to all of them, but this concept has been out there for a few years. Every, every time we made a presentation about the project, the, the fields were described as the base model. You know, this is, this is what we could squeeze into our budget, we hope we can do something else without being specific. And I think at least the, the immediately surrounding towns, if they don't know that Lexington has sort of some ideas on this, I think they haven't been paying attention. Also, in, at least in Concord, in our monthly chairs meetings and so forth, I have kept people informed about the legislation that was, you know, in general terms, the kinds of things it would allow. And I don't believe anybody has jumped up and down from Concord to say that we want to build another pool over there or...
It's not from Concord.
But you, but you have had other cooperation on facilities during the period of construction.
With Concord?
With Concord.
Oh, yeah, but I've been able to do that.
Which have not apparently evolved into, yes, we'd like some permanent facilities over there, it's been the other way around. Temporary used by Minuteman of facilities in Concord during the, the construction. So I'm not in favor of the amendment and would cautiously support the original motion.
Dave?
I, I think the only thing that, that significantly has changed since the previous discussions is we now have the, the supportive legislation that allows us to go into broader discussions around long-term leases.
Agreed.
And so, again, I go back to the original issue is, is I think this is too restrictive. If it was broader or, or more open to, to general discussions, and again, I invite Lexington to have those discussions and participate in that, and, and, and be supportive of whomever comes to the table. But we need to be open to opportunities, and, and I realize we have time constraints. But again, without taking a, a more global statement or intent, we're not going to find out what the opportunities are. And so, yes, time is ticking, but if we're restrictive, then we do limit opportunity... costs by going with a specific candidate, and so I won't support this the way it's written.
Anyone else? To let you know, I'm going to abstain from both votes, although I've been a listener because I have not been privy to the meetings that have gone on between the administration and the town. I've known some, little stuff is going on in the town, obviously, but I think just for, if nothing more for appearance sake, I should abstain, so I'm, I'm going to abstain on both of these votes. So first of all, let's, the vote would be on the amendment, which would be-
The second amendment first.
I, yeah, it's only, there's only one amendment.
I thought you were two amendments.
No, we have the one.
One, one amendment. The, so let me read what it, what the amendment is. It is, there is a period after the word district in the third line, so the amendment is, be a move that the Minuteman School Committee supports the consideration of a partnership with the town of Lexington to augment the expansion of athletic fields on property belonging to the Minuteman Regional Vocational School District, period. And we've had, so I think we're ready, we should be ready, we've voted on that, we've been discussing that. So, as I say, I'm abstaining, all in favor of the amendment. Zero, all opposed. You're, you're still up to, it should be seven, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Seven no, and one abstention. And now we vote on, we vote on the, the, on the, on the motion, which is what's written on the paper, unless someone else has something else they're going to propose, but the motion would be, that we vote on would be, of this, of this continue reading after district, and further authorizes its superintendent to develop a memo of understanding or similar document for consideration by the district. So it would be, that's the, what we're voting on, what we're voting on now is what's on the paper.
You're abstaining from this one as well?
I'm abstaining from this one as well. Okay, all, all in favor of the motion? One, two, three, four, five, six. All opposed? One, and one abstention. Okay, the, I think we have a-
It passes at sixty-eight point five percent versus the forty-three point seven we're required.
Yeah, I'll take a little while waiting for it. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, stay tuned.
All right.
Hi, so, I'm sorry, Paul. We'll be on the campus development. Is there any way you can survive this, really, math, the entire campus, because I do quit the home to athletic fields?
Well, it's on the website, if you go, yeah.
Okay.
It's hard to read, unless you have a bigger, um-
Do you have, do you have that land, is it still available?
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's, it's hard to understand what, what's available.
You can get a little, Jennifer, you can get a little idea from looking at these maps, that shows where-
Did you see those?
Where the Tremont School is, and all that land is available. You get a little bit of that.
If, if the website doesn't work for you, just give me a call.
Okay. I'd also, I'd like to recommend that when this meeting is called in October with the town meeting, or town managers, that all of us be invited to attend.
I'll, I'll seriously consider that.
Okay.
You'd have to mark it as the school committee.
Yeah, it had to be one, it's the school.
Well, it's easy enough to do.
Yeah, that's no issue.
If the form doesn't show up, you can't vote.
It'd be during the day.
But if people can come, I think it would be a good idea, I would certainly, unless I have a permit that I can't break, I would come with, with my new town manager from Sparsen, October first.
So the last thing in my report, if I may-
Yeah, go ahead. Like this one, did you get your, Jennifer, did you get your answer about how to find the-
All of them.
All right, I'll take care of it.
All right.
The last section is my goals.
How about access to Minuteman issues?
Oh. What was that about? Oh, water, I had great notes, I love them. The access issue has to do with the impact of, it has to do with two prongs, it's a two-pronged issue, which I'll report on frequently over the year. One has to do with new membership, you know, Watertown and other towns, and the other has to do with the restrictions that are being placed on students coming here by the regulation. And there, I guess apparently a chart dated in there about our, the diversity of the school going down-
Right.
-as a result of this. We have some other, we're looking at some other data, and I've talked to people at the Department of Ed about their concerns about this issue as well. The new commissioner is coming here in a week or two for another meeting, and, and we're going to be speaking about it as well. The idea that I'm proposing is just simply that, if there are schools adjacent to Minuteman District that have students on a waiting list, that those students on the waiting list could apply to another vocational school, that may have space. And there are three schools that are in that situation that surround Minuteman, and they have students that, I believe, should be given access to the programs we have. Be that as it may, I'll give you an update. The Watertown, Kevin and I met with the superintendent and the new business manager there last week. We are going to present to the Watertown Budget and Curriculum Subcommittee on Monday, October fifteenth. We have shared with them some updated charts that show what the costs would be. I'll remind the school committee that one of the things that has piqued their interest in our new regional agreement in regards to their joining sooner than later, has been the section that talks about a new member being gradually responsible for the full capital expenditure by the fourth year of their membership. So I'm getting some information to Dee, the superintendent, and we're going to talk about the agenda more specifically, but the fact that we've been invited to the Watertown Subcommittee, I thought was a good step forward.
It is. Question? Just, just a comment, that you talked about the gradual assumption of, we can negotiate the capital portion of the assessment. That, because the admission of a town, whether it's Watertown or anybody else, is subject to, is, is amendment to the agreement, it makes it subject to the approval of all the other town meetings, so we can't give the store away on that, but we can, if it is to our long-term advantage to have another community who acts as a member, it argues for perhaps being, you know, not, not charging them everything all at once, and I'll really-
Right. Yeah.
I mean, I, I view it more as, as granting them a subsidy as a way of enticing, enticing them in, and I'm, I'm happy to do that within, within a reasonable range, but I, 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 I do think that bringing Watertown as a member would be a great, a great step, step forward for the district. But, but you're right, it, it, you know, it's, it's something that Ed and Kevin can talk about, but it would have to come through, through the committee, and, and it's not clear whether that, you know, what, the, the regional agreement, I think, would just be amended to add to Watertown, whereas, whereas the, whereas the financial-
You'd go against it if you didn't like the deal.
Right, 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 but the deal is going to be made by this group.
But the deal would be public, though, but you're right.
Or we wouldn't put it on the billboard.
We got two spheres. We should be fine with whatever deal we make.
Sorry, geez.
Tough, tough audience. Any, any other, any comment, any other question for Ed about it? You know, Watertown would be a wonderful addition, I hope that proves to be true. All right. Moving along to-
So the-
... the standard leadership goals.
Yeah, you'll see-
They're in your packet.
But what I included was last year's goal, and then below it, in sort of the double bolded box, is this year's goal, and there are four of them. But what I've been doing in the past has been giving these to my executive team to get input from them, because their goals flow out of mine, and also give these to the school committee in case there were some things that I wasn't getting quite right in the goal. I've tried to make them simpler, in the spirit of making things simpler, and they, they focus on pretty much the same things. And, and you may, you may, oh, two MOUs, yeah, I think, I tried to be specific, too. Develop two MOUs for approval by the school committee with two communities leaning towards full membership. Aggressive goal, but I think it has to happen. And then the campus development. So if you have suggestions for me, please send them to me and copy Julia, or, I'm not going to workshop them here, but if you have suggestions.
Any, Jennifer or Pam, did you have a-
In the Phase Three Campus Development, that is beyond the athletic fields.
Yes.
Thank you.
Jim?
Maybe, maybe this is, this is in the category of workshop, but I think it's, I mean, this is, this is the time for us to give you, to give you some of the feedback. And I guess, I mean, one, you know, one makes sense, two, I wouldn't want that to be too high a priority, because there are other things that are really critical in this next year, that involve making sure that we transition in, you know, to the new building, that, and so, and so I'll probably send you some more, some more comments, comments about that.
Sure.
Three, on the, on the, on the MOUs, I'd be, I'd be more than happy just to have the focus, have the focus on Watertown. And I think that's the, in, in terms of a new member goal, that is clearly the, the one, the one there, and then-
I was thinking of Belmont as the other one.
Belmont is, Belmont is a member now, so, so, until goal is done, right? And then, and then, and then, and then there's no goal, I mean, we will hear from, we will hear about the enrollment, but the other issue is just enrollment and the fact that this year's freshman class is, is about twenty students less than last year's, some freshman class, and that's, I mean, that should, that should be worked in, worked into your goals.
Mm-hmm. So thank you.
You still going to write that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's all, workshop, all, all on.
Sue. Very good. On goal number four, implement a Phase Three Development Plan, what does that mean by implement? Because I would assume that it, the, it is beyond the athletic fields that we're talking about, that the implementation would have to come after approval by the school committee of what the plan is, correct?
Yeah. Yes, it'll propose or something, that. Oh, that's good feedback.
Anything else on this point? Sue, you went, well, maybe you don't need to put that, to send that to Julia, but maybe Ed has got that, okay, if you might want, sure, little bit, yeah. Anything else from anyone? Okay. So, Ed will take into consideration everything that people have said, and hopefully we'll be able to vote on his goals and educator acceptance at the next, or endorse, whatever the right word is. Any, any other comment, Eddie?
Yes, thank you.
Ed is leaving, and his back is Kelly. Thank you. George, are you taking Jack Dillon's place tonight? I assume you are.
Yes.
The opening of school, this will report, George.
Jack sends his regrets, he's at a mandatory training tonight for SEI, is what we're talking about.
Oh, he is?
I think he probably just got out making guarantees, having less fun than we are, so.
Two bottles of wine, I think, would be appropriate for that, I know what he's talking about.
Thanks. Re- affirm his notes, just a couple comments about the opening of the school, but it's been going very smoothly. We've had a really low amount of schedule changes this fall, and that's due to the great work of our guidance department, particularly Diane Dempsey, it's a lot of work scheduling. It's any art in a science, she's done a really good job. Our freshman exploratory is in progress, and that seems to be going well. And so far, the freshmen have adapted well to our schedule, which has, you know, has a lot of rotating parts to it, and they've, they've adapted pretty quickly, so it's good. Usually around now, we have, can tell you a little bit about MCAS, but those scores are still embargoed, released this week, Thursday, so I could just say, I think it'll be okay, I don't need to change. An update on the Blue Ribbon Award, which is a federal designation, and a national award, that's based mostly on the MCAS results from last year, we're still waiting to hear. So they should make that selection, you know, next week or the first week in October, because they're having a ceremony in mid-November, so I think it's just a matter of whatever's happening down there in Washington DC, with smoke clears with this, what's going on, maybe they'll make some time for us. Really want to thank John Camerata, he's our data specialist, really compiled all the data for that report, and we're about ninety percent of it. And as Dr. O'Quinn talked about, you know, the students and staff are really saddened by the loss of Bruce Flood, who was with us for twenty years, just a great colleague, a very caring, competent man.
George, did you finish the last school year, teaching the-
He did, he was in and out quite a bit, but, you know, but he let any of him down, he really liked, he wanted to be here, he wanted to be here for his kids, so-
Thank you.
Jack and Brian Tilson took about thirty students to the funeral, and we got a bus and took them over, so the kids were really thanking them, really paid their respects. So that's, those are Jack's comments on the opening of the school, you know, we have enrollment data in the packet, we're looking right now at a five-seventeen over wall, we're looking for some good news, you know, the retention numbers are pretty good for the class of twenty twenty and the class of twenty twenty-one, so we're pretty stable over time, which is good. It's not done yet, the official number will come out on October one, that'll be the one we'll be working with, but, you know, having an interview or two this week, so we'll just see what the final shakeup is with that.
Jim?
Yeah, just, just looking at this, at this table, a couple, a couple things stand out, is that the numbers really dropped off from, from the Declarant towns and Watertown. Do you think that's a, just a, sort of a random thing, and they'll bounce back up, or do you think that's, that's sort of a new normal?
I think it's a new normal for the Declarant towns.
Okay.
That's what we can expect. We've, we've asked the Declarant towns this year, like we always do, you know, would you like us to come out for a presentation, could we get contact information for your students? We haven't heard anything from Western, Whalen, Sudbury, or Carlyle. Lincoln is inviting us to, to come out and speak, and we get to Boxboro just because it's an active Boxboro contingent, but you'll notice that we didn't, we didn't mold anybody from Boxboro last year.
As far as you know, are, are these towns doing anything other for kids who want, who want career in both types of stuff, or, or is it just being sort of worked in?
What they're, what they're telling me when I go is that, when I went last year, was that we were making the presentation, but that they were making information about other schools available to all the students and parents, so, you know, when Assam and Dallas was having theirs, when the Shrobel was having their open house, so, yeah, I think they, if there are kids that are interested, it, it's pretty clear to me that they're being redirected somewhere else.
And then the second, the second comment is just, you know, there's a, that, that the, that the whole drop from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, can, have you seen in the, in the, 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 that the, that the, that the number of girls, girls in the school? And do you have any comment on that? I mean, that, that number of boys has stayed constant, or we've seen a, a sharp drop off.
That's a conundrum, because most of the student ambassadors that we take out are girls, you know, so we really, we make a strong emphasis to bring the girls to, to do presentations. I think that's also why we hired Assistant Director of Admissions as a female, so maybe that will, that's really-
Gets a few, got it back up, back up to the, on level that was the previous year, you'd have a hundred and forty-five percent.
Mm-hmm. Anyone else?
Just subtext on that comment, do you know if those girls were coming from the norm- Do you know if those girls were coming from the normative communities where there was also been a big drop over the years?
That's a good question. I can definitely take into the data to get that answer.
My sense is that, to the extent, Jeff, you talked in some of the Enrollment Task Force meetings about the attitudes of parents, about the future of their kids and their aspiration for college and career. I think to the extent that there are social opinion barriers, if I'm making that up, that they might apply more so to girls than to boys. But I'm not, I don't give them credibility, except that I think they're there, you know, as something to be overcome, and the Enrollment Task Force is talking about that kind of thing.
Certainly relational issues when it comes to peers and.
Yes.
I'm assuming your transgender students are being counted as their gender identity of choice?
Yes, you'll also see, when the official data is presented and catalogued, you'll see all kinds of different designations now, unidentified, you know, all kinds of things. Anything else, George?
Sue, sorry.
So, George, you mentioned that you've been able to hire an Assistant Director for admissions. Are there, I guess, are there things that you anticipate that you'll be able to do in addition now that you have someone else on?
Yeah, I think she's going to do a really good job. You know, I wear multiple hats, you know, evaluating teachers, management tech ones, a couple grants, other things as a sign. Her sole focus is going to be admissions. So I think what she's going to be good at, and we've talked a lot about this, is filling in those little gaps of, for example, you know, after an interview, can you follow up in the next day or two with a phone call and just find out how kids are doing and how parents are doing, if there are any additional questions? Something that I'd like to do, I don't do it enough, you know, or just sending out emails to, here's a picture of our kids. So those are little things. And she's talked about, we've talked about a lot of different ideas about. I mean, today, we said, what if we, what if she could just go to lunch at a middle school and just set up a table and Minuteman, and here to answer questions? You know, we don't have to worry about pulling kids out of class or already out of class. She can maybe hang around for half an hour and talk to the guidance counselors, you know, try to build those relationships. So those types of things, that's great. I can't always, I can't get to all those things, but she can.
Okay.
Yeah, so I know a couple of years ago, there was a big push on doing the road shows and getting things going. But again, we had momentum for a little while, and then things stopped. Again, we look at social media presence, presence in the district, the integration of the CTE vocations in the communities, getting visibility with the communities and building that relationship. Specifically, again, I'm talking about Bolton, Lancaster, Stone. We're out there, it's a ride. But years ago, the CTEs were in the community every week, every week. They had people out there, working with the garden clubs, working with construction crews, helping them get stuff. They all wore Minuteman stuff. There was Minuteman stuff everywhere. And kids came here because it was part of the community. My biggest challenge is reminding people in our community that this school is an option. And we fail as a school in reminding the young communities that this is an option. And so we need to have it part of what we do every day. And again, I see Ernie on social media every blessed day posting stuff. And Assabett's getting the better of us right now, right? And the Shoba Tech has got all sorts of stuff up and down 495. We're not doing it.
What do you mean by up and?
You drive up and down 110 or 495. There's logos and posters and stuff with partnered businesses that people are working at. And they're promoting the school as an option. I mean, it's part of the community. You go into restaurants, and there's a little logo that says, you know, the Shoba Tech or payers by, right, provided by, you know, Assabett, or come to our epicureum room for lunch, right? So there's all this advertising. You go to, just go to the Solomon Pond Mall, a whole wall is dedicated to Assabett, right? And again, I get it. They've got a different budget than we have, but we are not doing enough to change the mindset of the community, to keep it in the forefront. As STEM and engineering and all of our advanced manufacturing is state of the art, and we're an option. So, I mean, I work hard at it. Every time we get a post or whatever, I'm on social media doing it. But I don't see us doing it. And, you know, I do it because I'm there and I care, but the school should be doing it. We should have a multimedia presence, and the kids should be empowered to be posting. Right? Get it going. So that's my feedback, is we're missing the boat. And we've been missing the boat for years, and our numbers show it.
Yeah, well, we're taking a look at all of our marketing practices. That's sort of the advantage of having another person in the office, so. I'm taking a look at that.
Okay, yes, Sue.
I know. Just to follow up on what Dave was saying, you'll see this, more about this at the next school committee meeting, but the strategic planning group, as part of our efforts, we did go and evaluate, assess, I guess, what other, like Blackstone and Assabett and schools like that in the Shoba Valley had up on their websites. They're radically different than what we're able to offer. And I don't offer this as a criticism. I would really like to know how we could enhance the website.
Yeah, I mean, we, that's, I've wanted to really go at that for a couple of years, to be honest with you. I think we're probably in a position to do that now, you know, we're talking a little bit, especially as we transition to a new IT model instead of ET model. You know, who's going to have oversight over the website? And that's really the other issue, is it has a old-fashioned look to it. It's not, you know, pretty easy to see. But, you know, I think now, maybe we can have the opening to be able to do that. I, you know, that's something I want to talk about with Dr. McQuillan, is putting a team together to do exactly that. I just want the authorization to run and go, you know, and do something like that. But as far as, you know, that, and that's, it's all kind of connected. It's the social media piece. You know, I think there's a lot that we can be doing, there's a lot more. We're doing more than we did, and there's more that we can be doing, you know. But it's just, it's getting the right people with the right skill sets, the opportunity to be able to do what they do well and shine it and be able to do that. Hopefully, we're moving in that right direction now.
Can I just follow up?
So, again, I'm not being at all critical. What can we do to help? The enrollment issue is critical. It's time critical. And I hear that things are, people are thinking the right way and whatnot, but do we need to hire somebody? Does Minuteman need to get serious about putting a web designer in the budget, for example? I mean, do we have concrete things that are being put forward that you're willing to talk about here?
I've got a ton of ideas. I don't lack for ideas, you know, that's not the problem. You know, the problem sometimes is, you know, it's just, like I said, getting the right personnel, getting enough personnel. I'm thinking that having an assistant is going to be extremely helpful for me to be able to tackle some of these things that, I get it. I just can't execute all the ideas that are in my head. I don't have the skills to do it, so I need somebody else to do it. And, you know, bearing in mind, sometimes we're dealing, I know a lot of times, we bring out the road shows. We do do some of those things, we do. But those things are, you know, when they flow out of what they're already doing in classes, it's fine, it's great, it can work. But sometimes you're forcing that, and it can put a lot, it puts a lot of strain on teachers, you know. Take one teacher around the building with his two or three best kids to do a demonstration. You know, Bolton, let's say, on Royal Lab, well, that's great. What's happening with all the kids that are over here? They're not being taught, they're sub, you know. So there's a lot that goes into that, and then you're always questioning, what's really, you know, what's my ROI? How do you measure that? And I don't, I don't know, you know. But we do do some of those things, but yeah. Horticulture's on this whole house. I mean, I, you know, I scratch my head, we're knocking it out of the park in so many ways. And, you know, as much as we can get the word out, we're getting the word out.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. Knocking it out of the park. I mean, there's so much, so much here.
The biggest things I think you could do as a team, really, to me, the number one thing is getting a change in that regulation. Because that opens up every district right off the bat, you know, that would be helpful.
It's the industry.
Well, we're going to still focus on in-district. That is our focus. We are 100% focused on it. However, you know, it's, you want enrollment, I can get kids, we can be helpful. It's hard when there's a shrinkage. Every year, it's a different dynamic. It's, we're going to quit, now we quit, now we're really gone. It's, all right, well, how do you? So we get some stabilization out in the district, and if we can add another community, that would be, you know, because in so many ways, I think we're doing great. It's just, you know, circumstances keep changing every day.
Jeff, Pam, Carrie, then Dave, I guess, why else?
You're going to have a report soon from Pam on the enrollment committee's work. I suggest if you have a very concrete idea, you send an email so that it'll get to her, so it'll come in our meetings, so we can add to the list of things we have in our list, which is quite extensive. And by the way, one of the things we did at one of our meetings is I had George go through all the things that he was doing. And the list went on and on and on. And my comment was, I'm not sure that the assistant is sufficient to give us, no, seriously, to give us the opportunity to do all the things that we want to do. So we're going to have to think of more personnel. But we want to do the things that are most likely to succeed. And one of the biggest challenges we have here is that the type of communities we have is harder to make inroads on. But you'll hear from Pam's report some of the things that we have been working on. I hear two other suggestions here that weren't necessarily in our list that I like. So, you know, send the email to, I don't know if you can send it to Pam directly or it has to go through, whatever. But however it is, send it so you can bring it up in a meeting and put it in our list. And I seriously think that we are going to need additional personnel to make this work beyond adding the assistant. And I went over the list of all the things that he was trying to do, and seeing that, of course, there's going to be holes here and there. Here, a person cannot do that when you have 10 different communities that have different personalities you're trying to communicate with, and you have very limited resources. It's pretty damn hard to keep track of everything. So you have to, you have to choose what you can do. You may have to become more adamant about some of your statements. We can talk about that at some point, but you can't do everything. And certainly, I think, you need to put more personnel into it. Just send it to.
Yeah, personality meaning Minuteman personnel.
I'm talking about Minuteman personnel, and there's some ideas that the superintendent has had that I think that Pam is going to be.
Things have got, it's a good time to do it because we're now developing the budget, so we could hear from the committee. So look, Pam, and then Carrie, then I had something I just wanted to add.
Well, I basically wanted to ask whether you wanted to take the Enrollment Task Force out of order since we were talking about enrollment, or whether you want to wait. And maybe we could hold the discussion until we get to that. Because I think a lot of the ideas that are coming up are things that either we have talked about or could add to the Enrollment Task Force.
Why don't we jump and do that? Go ahead.
Okay.
Your report.
Okay, so, you know, I think as everyone has been saying, and the Enrollment Task Force obviously sees increasing the enrollment as a top priority. And we're really focused on what can, how can we support efforts to increase enrollment among member towns? Now, I know George just mentioned, oh, you know, work on that regulation. But in terms of this task force, we're really looking at what we can do to be increasing enrollment from member towns. And we had two meetings this summer to help get us organized. Jeff actually drafted a series of memos, kind of, you know, focused on increasing enrollment and really helping to look at and define how can we create an environment where, you know, we can reach the families whose children can benefit from Minuteman, and how to get those families to consider Minuteman. So, that's it. But as we have talked about in previous meetings, that reaching parents is, has been a struggle. And I think George has been very upfront that that's something that, you know, he has really struggled with. How can we get in front of parents in order to be talking about the benefits of Minuteman? And how can we be changing that mindset that I think Dave talked about? You know, so people are really understanding the benefits of a Minuteman education, and how, in fact, often the children who go through Minuteman are in a stronger position when they do get to college. And we, through those discussions, there actually was a concrete proposal that the superintendent had put out to the committee to put in place what we're calling parent liaisons in five of the member towns that are not supporting Minuteman at a 6% level. So not every town would need this, Jennifer. But that we look at the towns where the Minuteman enrollment maybe is not where it should be, and that we identify among, you know, among parents and students what we're calling parent liaisons. These parent liaisons would receive a stipend and really be responsible for supporting the recruiting efforts by reaching out to parents, providing information about Minuteman, being a contact person that they can call with questions, who can be helping with some of that really important follow-up, and, you know, in general, being a resource to parents for our recruitment efforts. You know, there would, you know, there would be some very concrete responsibilities that need to be coming to a monthly meeting, you know, identifying and setting goals for each of the parent liaisons. But that was something that, you know, the superintendent was moving forward on, you know, looking to set up, you know, that kind of a niche structure to be supporting, to be supporting those efforts.
Would that involve, could that involve the Minuteman Parents Association? Would they be, you think they might? Is that a possibility that they might be a?
They would be a source, yeah.
A source or liaison, yeah, that's what I wondered. Yeah. Carrie, we'll come back to you, Jeff, with Carrie, you were next. Or, I'm sorry.
Well, Ernie, but I guess I think people with questions or want to add to the liaison issue because I think that that's something new that, you know, the rest of the committee hasn't really heard yet. Why don't we pause, if that's okay with you? And just see if there's questions or comments on that.
I was going to just briefly comment on the in-district, out-of-district. For the short term, I'm not really concerned about whether somebody is in-district or out-of-district because there will be a capital fee being charged to the out-of-district students, and all of our costs will go down and the reputation of the school goes up if seats are filled. Longer term, of course, I'd rather have them come from members. But that may be new towns like Water Town seriously considering joining the district because it's a better long-term position for them. Or maybe from more kids from the towns who are already here. I couldn't put my finger necessarily on exactly what. I couldn't put my finger necessarily on exactly what the reasons are, but Concord's enrollment in the time I've been on this committee has gone from a total of seven to a total of 24. And I think that's because we're talking about Minuteman in, in public meetings. We don't often make it into the newspaper, but, but people know we're here. We have had a couple of cooperative programs, like you're talking about, where kids from Minuteman have come and done landscaping on, on a couple of public projects. People know Minuteman is here. And I always make a big point, I've forgotten exactly, I think you did mention that Minuteman is part of Concord's school system. You know, it's, it's one of the options for all of our kids. And I, I wish I could get even more of them here because I think for some kids, it still is the better choice for middle schools. But there's, for a lot of reasons, kids are still going to other places that I think would themselves fare better here.
If you wanted more comments on the liaison, I think that's an excellent idea. And perhaps, as I said earlier, the Minuteman Parents Association, MTA, might be a source of identifying people. Just, I think, I'm below the, other, another organization, not a school, we try to do that too, to provide mentors and liaisons and people available to support people in what, what they're doing in the, in the particular organization. What I, I just wanted to mention, one thing that, that George and I last spring, I think it was last spring, I lose track of when things happened. We met with all, you and I met with all the, of the, George made the presentation, I went along for the ride, basically. We met with the, the presidents of all the PTAs in the town, plus the, they have a PTA council and all the presidents came to that. And George did, talked about Minuteman, but also offered to, to meet with parents. Anyway, make, long story short, I think I sent him a copy of the email. I can't remember if it was Diamond or Clark, I think it was Clark. The Clark PTA is or, has organized a, a time for George to come and speak to parents at a time when parents will be in the building, as opposed to calling a special, you know, a special meeting. That, we made that point, we met with them, to meet with parents at a time when they're already going to be coming to a school around and say, hello, this is the night, one more night for you to be out, say. So that works, at least with one of our middle schools. So he'll, he'll be meeting with, I don't know how many people show up, it's being drawn from that, of what's, how big the subset. And I like the idea that it's happening at a night that they're already gonna be there and George will be there. With, you gonna take the assistant with you? You don't know yet?
Yeah, I think I will be taking her to the, yeah.
Okay, good. Yeah, but how it works, I'll be interested just on a number of levels. Jeff?
Yeah, just some follow-up comments. The first is that I agree that the out of district is important too. But our committee is focused on the in district issues that's limited. And the other thing is that, going back to the parent liaisons, I'm hoping that one thing that they'll do, which I think is very important, is to help organize the parents within the communities that often do not have much of a voice. Because there, there're not that many of them and they may feel intimidated if they're not politically active within the community. Give them an idea of how to organize so they can have a bigger voice in, in their community. Sure. Hoping that that's one of the, the goals. And also, we also talked about the issues of access because a lot of our communities still make it very hard for George to do his job and have even the simplest opportunity to communicate with parents and the students. And we're kind of working on a framework of how we can inspire them to do a better job of what they're doing. So we also talk about things like having a program for guidance counselors. So really, my view is that in order for guidance counselors to do their job, they have to know about this school as well. And they should all be rotated through here every few years. So I'm gonna push on that really hard. And by the way, the, the, for, even if teachers wanna come and see us, the professional development they'll gain by coming to see the school and talking to us would be more value than 90% of the junk they shove down their throats. So again, professional development hours will actually have merit instead of what they normally do by coming here to visit and seeing what we do here. I'm gonna, I think we should be pushing that angle to.
Thank you. I saw Pam first, then Dave, then Stu, and then Jennifer.
Yeah, thank you. And the liaisons were one of the most concrete issues that we talked about. We've been talking about other, as Jeff mentioned, a number of other items. Like, there was a real recognition that we're looking at a fairly comprehensive plan to, like, not to be putting more work on George and now his assistant director, but, you know, how we can support that. But those things included tours of the building for middle school guidance, the guidance departments. You know, having parents' nights and hopefully the liaisons can help us with that at each member of middle school. We wanna really revisit our talking points to make sure that, again, our talking points are ones that are going to be reaching, you know, the, the parents and the families whose kids will benefit the most from, from Minuteman. We also, at the last meeting, did address and we brought up the website. And in particular, looking at ways to maybe cut down the number of steps for a potential student to, you know, tell us that they're interested in Minuteman and to really make that process a little easier. And I think at that point, George had mentioned to us that you're in the process of working with the web developer to be making some changes. So, you know, so we're hoping that, you know, again, just looking at things that, you know, might be slight barriers, but the website in particular, we wanna make sure we're making it as easy as possible for, you know, for families and potential students to be able to access it and indicate their, their interest. Whether that means additional resources, we didn't get that far.
I just wanna, a test of procedure, if you would. Are you gonna be reporting again to us next month?
I can. And with that, the enrollment task force was supposed to meet tonight, but because this meeting got scheduled, we canceled it. So if we could just take a moment, please at the end to see if we can.
I think it'd be great. You, you, you might have more things sort of nailed down and be right here than your minds.
Yeah. But right now, we, so those are the types of things.
Sure, very good. Jim, and then we'll go down, Jim was next, and then we'll go down.
So then, so the non-member versus, versus, non-member versus the member, I mean, the changes in, in regs. I mean, that's, that's really just sort of dealing with other VOTEC schools that are, that are filled up. And it's sort of a, you know, it's sort of a catch, it's catch, catch, I can't. I don't think that's a sustainable path to success here, counting on, on picking up the, the second choices of the non-member towns. I think it's much more critical to focus on, on the member towns. And I think, you know, working with guidance counselors, doing the marketing in short-term works. If it doesn't work after, a couple of years after we've been in the building, you know, then I'd, I'd rather focus on, you know, do we need to change the programs or add programs? I mean, are, I mean, is, is opening up, I mean, re, rethinking the junior, senior year track a way of, of filling up the school and focus more on serving the needs of, of the member towns rather than, rather than picking up that.
Don't get me wrong, that's definitely the long-term view. I'm just looking at, well, what do we do until we get there?
Jennifer, I think you were next, or we, or we.
You're going to have, I'm, I'm jumping the gun a little bit on this strategic planning piece, but we're gonna be on the agenda for next month, at least I hope so. And before then, you're all gonna receive a packet as soon as October 1st. We're meeting again and we need to approve this before I really put it out there. But one of the things we looked at that I think is critical is, there are five regional, locational schools in the state that have 20% increases in enrollment over the last five years. And as you know, we have not. And so, we went in and looked at what they're doing. And the image change that they have come through with, each of them, is very impressive. I'm gonna propose that instead of, not right now, but I mean, what I'm thinking about is, we need an image on the wall. We really, really do. And the website, as you said, it's not just outdated, it's boring, right? I mean, we can do all we want to talk to more students and more guidance counselors and whatnot, but our image and the paper mailings that we've done, or at least what I had seen in the past, it's boring. It feeds the image that this is an old-fashioned place, you know, your father's VOTEC or whatever you wanna call it. And what these high-growth schools are doing is really exciting, a lot of it. So I just wanted to put it out there that I'm gonna be suggesting that we do something fairly radical in terms of messaging and who we are. Letting people know that we are, we're, we're at school for tomorrow.
You seem so common, you wanna be radical, I like the contrast. So very common, you wanna be radical.
Yeah.
So what might be one of the schools, we, like, you know, we could go on their website ourselves.
Blackstone.
Blackstone?
Blackstone Valley, absolutely, there. I've copied a whole bunch of their stuff, but it's worth going in to look at.
We could do it individually.
Yeah, absolutely, please do.
Thanks.
The Show the Valley is pretty interesting, I mean, it's one of the high-growth schools as well.
Okay, good, thank you. Anything else like this right now? All right. So we'll look forward to, have you?
I thought you were going to ask me this.
No, I thought you were, you had passed.
No, no, I, she was next.
Okay, all right.
So now I'm on. I'm going back to the parent liaison. I think one of the important things for retention is to have that parent liaison available to incoming parents to talk to. Because I know one of the things I do is talk to parents who call and say, what's going on with the freshman orientation? What do I do? How do I, you know, and you just talk them down, you talk them off the cliff and they go, okay. You know, to the, this is my kid, really have to get off at 6:00 in the morning? I say, yes, I do. There's not much you can do about it. But not just for the, to improve it, but also to maintain.
Yeah, that's good, good point. That's very good. Okay, shall we move on at this point? Wonderful ideas, wonderful work, and we look forward to, at least I, I'm sure we all do, to hearing the next month from both committees, that's terrific. And I'm gonna go on, look at these websites before, next week, or next month.
Do we go back to 6C?
Yeah, and we go back to 6C.
Of course, good. He's been waiting each week.
The, I know, is that those? George, the, the two field trips, we, we need votes on those, but they're not written here, but we need to, we, and I have the language for the votes. They're in our, in our packet, the descriptions are in our packet. Anyone have any questions for George about the field trip?
Can I just move them together? Do you want to do? Do you have the language here?
I have the language, let's go, yeah, I, I wrote it out here. Let's do them one by one, because it's a heck of it. This, the, the overnight field trip is one that the students have taken before, that this is a, this is not a new field trip.
This is the environmental technology?
Right. So the, the vote would be to approve the overnight field trip of the environmental students to AMC Noble View Facility in Russell, Massachusetts, September 25th through 28th. Any question?
Does match all the?
Does match all the requirements in Charleston, Chaperones, everything? Okay, all in favor? United States, eight, you know, eight zero, zero? And the second one is, it's a, it's a new field trip, the out of, out of state field trip, and we vote on the out of state field trips, to Southern New Hampshire University so that the students in the hospitality courses will be able to see, um, culinary hospitality students to understand the dozens of employment opportunities in the field. It's an out of state, but it's a one-day trip. And the vote would be to approve the out of state field trip of the culinary hospitality students to Southern New Hampshire University in Manchester, New Hampshire. And the date apparently is not cast in stone, October 23rd or the 25th. Any, just, any questions or discussions, Jeff?
What is the cost to the school of this trip?
Zero, they're, they're sending the bus down, bringing the kids out, and they're feeding them.
Even better.
Yeah.
So, so SNHU, they've got great, they've got great advertising on TV, by the way. At least I'm, I'm ready to take a course. So, are we all ready to vote? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Eight zero. Thank you very much, those are both approved.
I think it's the same for the, to the Hard Rock Cafe in New York City, in New York City. Put it in my hat, they came. Is, is somebody going to the Hard Rock Cafe?
Was that one from last year?
Yeah, it's from last, it's, it's, they had lunch.
Where was this?
It was after those two. It just has a new travel transportation estimate from last year.
Oh, okay.
I don't know.
If I can point out, I, I think this may have been a misfiled one here.
Yeah, yeah.
I just wondered if they're going again or?
Yeah.
The date was last year.
It's from last year. Yeah, I remember the kids they went to New York, they had their.
And the sheet after that is the, the Florida vacation for the top staff of the Minuteman School, the administration. Is that also from last year, the $20,000 Florida vacation right after that sheet?
No, you can take a vote on that if you'd like.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Okay, Kevin, you're up. Student activity accounts, fund, fund activity and balances, and we also will be taking a vote on that, which is on our table, on the table.
Yes, this is a call to a request from our faculty when we were doing our financial reports. We have requests to see all of our student activity accounts that we were carrying on the books, reflecting the beginning balance, the, what was expended, what was received in income, where our inbalances were. And they were initially sorted by fund number, yeah, and left on the table this evening. The same data, however, sorted by the accounts that are active versus inactive. I, I thought that that was an easier account to look at, or format to look at. What you find is it's varied levels of fundraising that goes on in some of these activities. We've discussed that, the superintendent has discussed that in terms of when we hire these stipend positions that, that more of an emphasis on fundraising overall for the group so that they're more self-sufficient and provide more opportunities to the students. What we found as we were sorting through them and comparing is that we, we were still carrying three, three class accounts, a class of 10, 11, and 14 with balances. Pursuant to the school committee policy regarding student activity accounts, after reasonable efforts to try and reach the class offices and ask them to withdraw the funds, if they fail to, to do so, that, that the, by vote of the school committee can allocate the balances to the current class accounts. So what, what was also included at the table is marked a vote asking that we transfer from a class of 2010 to 2011 to 2014. The total balance is $3,006.76, to transfer to the current classes of 19, 20, 21, and 22. $919.07 for each class for the purpose of closing their jobs.
So moved.
Second.
Any, any discussion or questions for Kevin? Yeah, I, I think we passed that policy last spring, new policy last spring, which is a good idea. So that it doesn't, the money just doesn't sit somewhere. Anyway, it's all right, don't look it up. You have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So I noticed that the graduating class of 2018 has a fairly sizable balance still. Are you, I mean, at what point, it's probably easier to get in touch with the class officers earlier rather than later, you know, now, rather than three years from now? They have a $6,117.
Eight seventy one cents.
Eight seventy one cents.
They voted, they actually, the class officers voted to transfer that balance to the class of 2022.
2022?
Yes.
All of it?
Yes.
That was nice of them.
Yes.
She seems like freshmen, that's really.
Okay, any other discussion or question? All, all in favor of the motion on the table? All opposed, none, but the pass is eight zero. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you. Jim, I have another comment regarding news I'd like to inform the committee on. We are planning our second free bond sales.
Right.
We're selling $46 billion general obligation bonds. They'll be level debt service for 30 years. We're gonna be selling those bonds the week of the eighth and we'll have the sales results for the, to. sales results, the reports to committee and a vote to authorize the issuance of those bonds at the meeting on the 16th. We're meeting, we have a conference call with Standard and Poor's regarding our credit rating this Thursday, and we'll also report any changes to the, to the rating. I want to correct what I mentioned earlier to the finance subcommittee meeting, we never asked what our ratings are. Current rating is double A.
Oh, good, good, great.
So, we are, I double A, so we'll try and maintain that. We spoke at a meeting earlier, I'll call this, but I want that on the record. And that actually will become before the committee, Ed, next, next month's meeting.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the short-term reports, I just have the statement that Alice gave, because she, she, she couldn't be here, she also wasn't, was not going to be able to come to the early meeting, but it's, her report is, my report for the policy task force is as follows. The admissions policy is under review as it needs updating. Ed has been in touch with Desi and is working with his team. After a drafting process, a recommended revision will be brought forward to the school committee for their consideration and vote. So, basically saying Alice will chair the effort, as she's been doing with all of our policy revisions. We will invite her to the finance committee meeting next month, and Ed will know, will all know more about what Desi is saying, et cetera, et cetera, and some of the recommendations coming from the, from the finance committee, but Alice will be heading the effort as she, as she has been. I hope she'll be here for the next meeting.
Yeah, with, I mean, with, with ample comment from, from me, because, because the, the, the enrollment policy, the admissions policy has got to be integrated with whatever our options are on the section in that field.
Right, that's why we've got Alice to go, and all of you as well, and Ken. Any questions at this point? Okay, that's the last item on the agenda, other than the secretary's report, Pam, yours.
Okay, having not, having not heard from, about any recommended changes to the draft minutes, I'd like to move to approve the draft minutes of July 17, 2015, 2018, as presented.
Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eight zero. Jennifer, do your thing.
No, I wrote with George. I was, I was told last time I was waiting for you all for questions.
And I did, I did, I just did. All in favor? All opposed, unanimous? Thank you all very much.
Oh, and enrollment, some of your task force, next, and we just want to set a date.
We can always try, Jennifer.
I know what we've got, Jennifer, but I think the, the enrollment committee, she did kind of spend a lot of work and showed, and we appreciate the effort.
Looking for?
And Tim, three.
How about next Tuesday? Next Tuesday? No?
I've got the, the town meeting, which may be very likely to be more than my expectation. We've got another, we've got another money.
Yeah. How about, how about the?
Yeah, we have an office in the meeting in by 30, so we can do it.
By 30, so if we?
We can do it before.
Thank you very much. I can't, I can't.
There's new officers in town.
But we have officers at by 30. I can't do it.